I'd like to call the April 19th, 2022 meeting of the Town of Easton Metal Planning Board. Meeting to order. Those in attendance are myself, Russell Denver, member Peter Punderson, member George Kingston, member John Torsia, member Cassandra Cheraswellow, and we are joined also by the Director of Planning and Community Development Bailey Mitchell and Nina Fazio, also from the Office of Planning and Community Development. So I'm required to ask if there's anyone in the audience who might be recording this meeting, and if so, would you please raise your hand? You can be brought into the meeting and let us know the method in which you are recording the meeting. I'll ask one more time. If there's anyone recording the meeting, please raise your hand. You can be brought into the meeting, and you can let us know the method in which you are recording the meeting. Hearing none. The first order of business is approval of the April 5th, 2022 meeting minutes. Hopefully, everyone's had an opportunity to review them. Anyone have any comments, suggestions, edits? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the April 5th, 2022 meeting minutes?
So moved, George.
Do I have a second?
No, second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. By roll call, Mr. Punderson?
I have to abstain.
Mr. Kingston?
Hi.
Mr. Torsia?
Hi.
Mr. Cheraswellow?
Hi.
And I'm a yes as well. So I would ask if the board would be willing to consider to take an item out of order, that being a continuation of a public hearing for Happy Acres. John, do you want to, well, is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any, okay, any discussion? So on the motion to take that, take that item out of order by roll call, Mr. Cheraswellow?
Hi.
Mr. Torsia?
Hi.
Mr. Kingston?
Hi.
Mr. Punderson?
Hi.
And I'm a yes as well. So John, can you please read that item?
Yes, so continued, under continued public hearings, number one case SD dash D 2022 dash one definitive subdivision plan for Happy Acres subdivision. Request by applicant for definitive subdivision approval for a 23 lot subdivision on a 31.8 plus or minus acre lot at 43 South Bend Lane, assessors parcel ID 54 dash six dash zero located in the Residence A zoning district, applicant Marlene Goldstein, 43 South Bend Lane, East Long Meadow MA. This has been continued from March the 15th, 2022.
So the planning board received correspondence from the petitioner's representative this afternoon, asking that the board consider to continue the public hearing because they've not yet had the opportunity to speak with the Town of Easton Metal Police Department Safety Officer, and that is something that we had requested that they do. Discussion or comments from the board? Mr. Kingston?
Mr. Chairman, for the benefit of the applicant, I have some concerns that I'd like to read into the records so that they will have an opportunity to respond to them when the continuation occurs. They have obviously not taken into consideration our concerns about having a separate stormwater lot and have retained that on the plan. Therefore, I have some comments relating to that lot. First of all, the stormwater parcel has no frontage on anything, and requirement of 6.1.2 in the subdivision rules and regulations is that all lots must have frontage appropriate to the zone. It doesn't say building lots, it says all lots. So there's an issue there because it has no frontage. The easements on the plan are noted as drainage easements, not as access easements, and therefore may or may not be able to be used to maintain the stormwater structures. The easements are not recorded. Thirdly, the operation and maintenance plan puts responsibility on Mrs. Goldstein, not the homeowners association, for the long-term operation and maintenance of stormwater structures. Fourthly, no homeowner association is mentioned in any of the documents I have seen, and there are no homeowner association rules and regulations or other documents filed with the subdivision plan. So there's no guarantee that there will be an effective homeowners association, and there are no deed restrictions related to maintenance of the stormwater structures. And I think all of that needs to be addressed before I would be favorable to approving it, and I just want to alert the applicant to my concerns so that they have the opportunity to address that and they're not ambushed at the next meeting.
Any other, any other members have, Mr. Punderson?
Good stuff there, George. That's excellent stuff. I like that. I want to express my concern for the traffic pattern, and I really feel that, you know, there's going to be probably at least 46 vehicles a couple of trips a day. It's a bad intersection to begin with, and I'm just concerned about having just the one intersection. And if it's at all possible, I could see a point of access and egress on the other end of South Bend Lane, heading down south on Summers Road. So I too want to wait for the traffic study. Somebody at a higher pay grade has to say, it's okay. That's the way I look at it.
Mr. Torsia, Mr. Cheraswellow, any comments? So on the request to continue the public hearing until our next regular scheduled meeting, which I believe is going to be May 16th, do I have a motion?
I can motion to continue it to May 16th at 16:00.
It's May 17th.
May 17th, thank you.
May 17th at 16:00.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done by roll call, Mr. Punderson?
Hi.
Mr. Kingston?
Hi.
Mr. Torsia?
Hi.
Mr. Cheraswellow?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. So I would ask both Bailey and Dorina, would you please alert the petitioners to review the comments from this meeting so that they can certainly be prepared to the, to the comments from the board members? Okay, next, so back to first item, Mr. Clark?
Yep. Under site plan review waivers, number one case SPRW 2022-9, request for a site plan review waiver for East Car Sales, a home office at 389 Elm Street, assessors parcel ID 34-28-0, located in the Residence A zoning district, applicant Wilfredo Gonzalez, 389 Elm Street, East Long Meadow MA. This was continued from April the 5th, 2022.
Mr. Gonzalez available?
I don't have a hand. Could I see a hand raised if the petitioner's in the audience?
Mr. Gonzalez, if you're available, please raise your hand. Okay, not seeing anything. What's the board's pleasure? I'll give you my comments. I'm not approving this until we actually see the individual. It's Elm Street's a very busy way, not that that is a specific issue, but I always get concerned with car sales, cars being located on the property, even though he says it's going to do it being an online. I just want to see the individual and let them know what indeed the requirements are on behalf of the town, because if there's ever an issue, I don't want someone coming back and saying they weren't aware of something. So I'm not willing to advance this without the petitioner appearing, but that's my, that's my thoughts.
I would support that and suggest we table it. This is the second no-show. I think if he doesn't show up again, we deny it. That's the way it goes.
So, so a motion to table us till the next meeting on May 17th?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Cheraswellow?
Hi.
Mr. Torsia?
Hi.
Mr. Kingston?
Hi.
And Mr. Punderson?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. That passes. Next item, Mr. Clark?
All right, number two case SPRW 2022-10, request for a site plan review waiver for Playtime, an online clothing store at 6 Birchland Avenue, assessors parcel ID 38A-12-8 in the Residence C zoning district, applicant Conda Thomas, 6 Birchland Avenue, East Long Meadow MA.
Mr. Thomas, raise a hand, please. Do not see, do not see a hand. Is there anyone here for the petitioner? On this item, raise a hand.
Anyone here for 6 Birchland? Okay. My comments are ditto.
Table it.
Motion, please?
Make a motion to table it to, what's the next date?
May 17th.
May 17th, meeting at 6 o'clock.
I'll second that with the concern that, about inventory in the house.
I was thinking about it too, George. How do you buy, how do you sell something you don't physically have, you know?
And, and that's actually a pretty busy street, especially during before and after school with all the school buses and so forth and so on. So by roll call, Mr. Torsia?
Hi.
Mr. Kingston?
Hi.
Mr. Cheraswellow?
Hi.
Mr. Punderson?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Next item, Mr. Torsia?
Item number three case SPRW 2022-12, request for a site plan review waiver for Lori Lee Gibson Consulting, a home office at 92 South Brook Road, assessors parcel ID 56-9-9 in the Residence AA zoning district, applicant Lori Lee Gibson, 92 South Brook Road, East Long Meadow MA.
That's me. Good night, or good evening.
Good night. I showed up, the first one to show up, huh?
Well, that's, I mean, that's better than the last couple. So, so really what we'd like to hear is a little something about you, the business, you know, what you're going to be specifically doing there at that location. So if you can start, that'd be great.
Okay, so my background is I'm in corporate training and have done sales and marketing all my life, and a couple of years ago, lost my job. So I started to just dabble in some sidekick ideas, and meanwhile, got called back to corporate, and I just want to do this as a sidekick. And basically, it's coaching and some sales all online. I'm actually, because I can't do that while I'm working. So I am going to put my courses online. I just started doing it. It's not even on there. I dabbled in a few live, and I'm getting some really good traction. So it's basically, either I would work with a team or a sales leader, either for themselves or to get their team more productive, more motivational. It's a lot of mind and some skills mixed with it, but it's all like online, kind of like what I'm doing right now.
Great. Questions for the petitioner? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the site plan waiver?
So moved, George.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Kingston?
Hi.
Mr. Punderson?
Hi.
Mr. Cheraswellow?
Hi.
Mr. Torsia?
Hi.
And I'm a yes as well. So that, that item passes. Best of luck to you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clark?
All right, item number four case SPRW 2022-13, request for a site plan review waiver for passingfriends.com, home office for online business at 409 Chestnut Street, assessors parcel ID 7-43-41 in the Residence B zoning district, applicant Michael Meyer, 409 Chestnut Street, East Long Meadow MA.
I think I saw, okay, Cindy Meyer? So you're, you're muted, and we can't see you yet.
So, one step at a time. Where's my daughter when I need her? I think I'm, sorry about that.
Not a problem. It's half the battle getting in sometimes, so.
This is why I'm learning to rely on other people. Thank you, Lexi. She came to say, you heard the distress in dad's voice.
So, so hopefully you heard the previous petitioner. So we'd just like to know a little something about yourself, what you're going to be doing at that location, a little something about the business. So if you can start from there, that's great.
Passingfriends.com, an online, sort of a combination of obituary slash planning for your own ending, if you would, selling caskets, flowers, the whole nine yards essentially happened out of an idea of missing a notice of a friend's father passing, and so you can now sign up to get notification if anybody in East Long Meadow dies, you get a text saying, I want to know about it. So you cannot miss a passing, just kind of the next evolution, I think, in what we have today's newspaper obituary, Mass Live is, you know, pretty much going bye-bye in a sense. So it's all out of online. Everything here is online. There's no customers here at the house. There's no materials being shipped or like that. So that's, that's business number one, and you may see a note on this that I was supposed to have a second set of paperwork in for my electric. I just newly licensed electrician, and I'm going on my own. So apparently, I'll be back here hopefully for May 17th, see what that one's about. But one thing at a time. So this is passingfriends.com.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Sounds good.
Hearing done. Do I have a motion to approve the site plan waiver?
So moved. I'll second that, George.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Cheraswellow?
Hi.
Mr. Torsia?
Hi.
Mr. Kingston?
Hi.
Mr. Punderson?
Hi.
And I'm a yes as well. So that item passes. Best of luck to you.
Great.
Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clark?
All right, moving along to A and R. So our A and R number one case A and R 2022-02, request by applicant for endorsement of a plan believed not to require subdivision approval under subdivision control law for the creation of two parcels in remaining land. Parcel A, a plus or minus 49,406.91 square foot or 1.13 acre lot containing a portion of 71 Hamden Road, assessors parcel ID 65-27-0, and parcel B, a plus or minus 32,134.01 square foot or .74 acre lot containing a portion of 71 Hamden Road, assessors parcel ID 65-27-0, all located in the Residence A zoning district, applicant Diane Markham, 71 Hamden Road, East Long Meadow MA.
So I took a chance that this is Mr. Smith, but I do not see Diane Markham in the list, so.
Okay.
Is that indeed Mike Smith? Maybe not.
Is there someone here representing the petitioner, Ms. Markham? Okay, pleasure of the board.
I know the land they're talking about, but I haven't passed anything since about a planning board without the petitioner in front of me. So if you want to continue, I guess that's probably what we'd have to do. Is that right, George?
Yeah, I would agree with that, that we would continue this one. What's an A and R? We don't continue it, we just table it.
Okay, table, yeah.
Okay. All right, let's move on.
Don't we have to vote on that?
Okay, so did you make a motion, Pete?
I'll make a motion to table.
You made a motion to continue, didn't he?
No.
I'll make a motion to table it.
Until the, until the May 17th meeting?
Right. Now, the trick here is with the A and R, I know there's a time limit on it, and we need to make sure that we don't go over that.
Is it like 60 days or 90 days?
Nina, do you know the, remember what it is?
I do not know that off the top of my head, no.
Okay, let me, but I think we, I'm pretty sure we have time to do this. So I would just suggest we table it for our next meeting.
Any discussion? So by roll call, Mr. Punderson?
Hi.
Mr. Kingston?
Hi.
Mr. Torsia?
Hi.
Mr. Cheraswellow?
Hi.
And I'm a yes as well. And just as an aside, the, the emphasis should be on the petitioner to be here. If, if there's an issue about the timeline, they were here, we wouldn't have the issue about the timeline. So.
I've never been at a meeting that so many people haven't showed up.
Yeah.
And. I'm looking at the application now, and it looks like a Michael Smith is a land surveyor on their application. So I don't know if he was here, what's going on with that, but.
Well, there is a Michael. I brought him in. But the other issue is people log into Zoom with any number of identities.
Yeah.
Which are cryptic. So.
Yeah.
I can't really guess who's who.
Okay. All right, next item, Mr. Clark?
Yes. All right, under new business, review and discussion of revocation of special permit, HBTSP 2029-0019 for Paul Bunyan Wood Company, a home-based trade at 160 Maple Shade Avenue, East Long Meadow MA, CO Thomas O'Brien, due to violation of special permit conditions.
So the way I'd like to do this is first, I'd like to hear from the zoning enforcement officer, Mr. Duquette. Then I'd like to hear from Mr. O'Brien or his representative, and then to hear from the neighbors, people on this issue, so that then we could kind of decide what we're going to do after that point. Mr. Duquette?
Good evening. You hear me?
We can. Thank you.
So, so tonight, you will see there is a home, home-based trade business special permit in question. Business is a tree service and landscaping business located at 160 Maple Shade Ave. I had two official written complaints for the property for excessive noise, log trucking, and log storage. As the planning board is a special permanent grant and authority, it will be decision of the planning board if there is in fact bylaw violations, and if there needs to be any modifications, amendments, revocation, or any further enforcement action needed.
Mr. Duquette, did you have an opportunity to review the property?
Yes, I did.
And what were your conclusions?
There's a few, I guess, questions that might need legal interpretation, as in agricultural, byright use, forestry, et cetera, for the property.
But was there anything to your, in your observation, that would have been a violation of the conditions that didn't require legal interpretation?
Maybe, the second time around, there was some log storage on there, which was direct violation of the special permit.
Okay.
Findings.
Right. Anything else you'd like to add?
Not at the moment.
So we'd like to kind of keep you in the meeting. So, so Mr. Brian or your representative, you're next. So could you please come into the meeting?
Should be on his way.
Okay, thank you. Hello? Mr. O'Brien? We can't hear you. Can you speak into the computer?
He's muted.
Can you unmute yourself? There you go.
No. Tom, you're still, you're still muted. So go down to your Zoom buttons there on the left and check your audio, and you maybe have the wrong microphone selected. Yeah. May have to hear you, and log in again. You got to select, join with computer audio.
So why don't we do this? So while you're trying to figure that out, Mr. O'Brien, I'm going to hear, hear from the, oh, now we can. Yeah, thank you. Good. Okay. So, so you received correspondence from the building inspector. You just heard what he had to say. Can you respond to the issues raised by the neighbors and the issues raised by the building inspector?
My attorney's supposed to be on this meeting, Larry Levine?
Mr. Levine, you want to come into the meeting, please? Can you bring him in?
Yep.
Okay. So, Mr. Levine, we can't see you or hear you yet.
Can you hear me?
Now we can hear you, but we can't see you.
I'm waiting for Dr. Mackey to get me on board.
You, you need to click a button that says start video.
Okay.
Just for people in the audience, so all of this Zoom goes away as of July 15th of this year.
That's the best news I heard today. Can you see me now?
We can see you now, and we can hear you now.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As Mr. Thomas O'Brien has requested that I represent him and speak on his behalf, my name is Larry Levine from Levine Law in East Long Meadow. And before I answer the message in the written complaint issued by Mr. Duquette, if I may give you some background on Mr. O'Brien's business, Mr. O'Brien has been at Maple Shade Avenue, the location, since 2001. He's been operating the tree service and his landscape service since that year. In 2009, he came before this board and asked for a home-based special permit, which was granted with some special conditions. He has continued to operate the business in the same process since 2001. In fact, about the last 10 years, the volume of the business has decreased because Mr. O'Brien, at that point, took full-time employment, first with a Rocky Mountain wood company, and the last five years or so, he's been employed by Eversource. So he's devoted, he's still devoting time to the tree service, but the volume is about 25% of what it was originally. The, I took the liberty of going on a side visit and also to explain what happens. And as an example, Mr. O'Brien, if you needed him to cut trees on your property, would come, cut the trees, cut the logs, bring them back to the site on Maple Shade, and then, in fact, get them ready to be transported via a tractor trailer. There are some cases where he has to do some trim- There are some cases where he has to do some trimming of knobs and cut the logs to length. But basically, he's just keeping them there until they're transported, uh, via that tractor trailer. He used to have in the, in the, um, heyday of his business there. Two trailers, uh, one trailer per week. And now it's a maximum is one trailer every other week. And Mr. Duquette's written stated violations. He points to one condition, one special permit condition that he feels was violated. And that's special condition number fifteen, if I may read it to the board. There shall, will be no retail sales, uh, sales on the property, no grinding of logs. And the applicant is not allowed to bring logs cut elsewhere off-site onto the property for harvesting of any kind. The, these statements that there was storage of the logs. That's the same process that's been going on for twenty-two years. They're merely there waiting for that tractor trailer to come. Uh, the special permit and our general bylaws require that, uh, those tractor trailers and any trucks. Only be operated between the hours of seven A M. to eight P M. Monday through Saturday. Nothing allowed on Sundays. Mr. O'Brien has abided by those rules. And what I, I have, um. Concerned with is the underlying section of Mr. Duquette's citation. The word harvesting. And I don't think that the word harvesting applies in the scenario I've described. What Mr. O'Brien does, he's not, although Mr. O'Brien has a sixty-one A forestry management plan for his own land. He doesn't harvest trees, uh, and then, um. Processes them, cuts them into boards, et cetera, et cetera. This is merely a place where he brings your logs from your property to his property. For eventual transport off the property. The, the complaints, uh, the complainant. Uh, I recommended that Mr. O'Brien, uh, meet with, if possible, with the complainant. Uh, Mr. O'Brien and his wife made attempts to meet with the complainant, also to call her. To the best of my knowledge, this is the first verified complaint. Uh, the question of noise is not in the complaint. To the best of our knowledge, there are no confirmed complaint filed with the police department. On noise violations, he's abided by what's required in section eight point zero nine zero of the general bylaws. And, um, I've known Mr. O'Brien over twenty years. He is a town-elected official, I know him to be a man of integrity, and, um. I don't see that there are actual violations. The, the interpretation of the word harvesting is, um, perplexing at best. And so I leave it to you. I don't see violations. He's willing to answer to anyone who complains. To no avail. And, um, nothing has changed in his operation, other than volume has decreased.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Levine, Attorney Levine.
Thank you.
Mr. Duquette, do you wanna respond before we ask some of the neighbors if they wish to be heard?
Probably not at this moment.
Okay. So I would ask that people that wish to be heard, please raise your hand. I would like you to focus on the, what you believe are the conditions that have been cited by Mr. Duquette. And whether there have been issues with them. So, uh, Mr. Mackey, I, there are many hands, I will leave it to you to bring in, in the order in which you wish to bring them in.
Oh. All right, it'll be, uh.
I, well, the first one I see is, okay, go ahead. So I see a Don Courier. Hello?
Hello, yes.
The floor is yours.
Thank you, I hope you have a few minutes. I have been here in this house for thirty years.
And where are you, ma'am?
I am on Maple Shade Avenue, one ninety-five, you know where that curve, that dangerous curve is, and I'm up on the hill, right after the school. My yard is looking over Mr. O'Brien's.
Okay.
It's not just me, there's numerous neighbors, now this has escalated over the years. I do have the special permit in front of me. There have been, in fact, outside of the hours, as matter of fact, Easter, the night before Easter, I wanted to cry. Because the buzzing and the vibrating started up again. Um, this does go on all hours of the day, seven days a week, now I just wanna explain a few things, and I have notes here. There was no need for me to, to meet privately with Mr. O'Brien, it's not just me, it's our, almost our entire street. It's, what we want is to be, what is, the permit is required is what is allowed and what is not allowed, and we are aware of what is allowed and what is not allowed. I have, my house shakes daily. I've lived here for thirty years, I've never complained about a thing. Our lights flicker, the electric company has been out numerous times. I have stress cracks in my windows, I mean, this is, it, there's a sewer line that's crushed in front, this has just started. I think there's more issues at hand here than what is being said. Now, what happened one time is I'm walking around the curve and a huge, long, flat truck. Flatbed truck, whatever it was, almost alongside of my house, almost hit me. This is a dangerous corner, it was filled with logs, long logs. Loaded with logs, and a gentleman looked, he went right up to the curb near my driveway, and he said. He was looking for Mr. O'Brien's address, I pointed to where it was, he had to deliver these logs. He backed up. I mean, this is in violation, if you look on this, of the traffic. This is on page three, number G, and there's other areas, it shouldn't affect the traffic. He backed up past the school, there's kids that walk the street, keep in mind. Backed up on our street, along flatbed, going all the way down, went up the curb around the school to get to Mr. O'Brien's house. I actually got in the middle of the road and stopped traffic. So he could pull this big, long truck and pull it in. That's dangerous, I'm sorry, this should not be allowed. Now, what he does, and what I believe happens is once these trucks loads, and it's not just every now and then, this has been more so. The past few years, that I have to close my windows, I can't sit outside, I can't have my dinner. On a summer night, I can't open my windows, because my house is shaking, it's buzzing, and I hear this noise constantly, it's just, it's distressing.
So, Miss Courier, can I ask you, could I ask you a question, so?
Yes.
So, Mr. Levine, Mr. O'Brien's representative, just indicated. That it's twenty-five percent activity of what it.
Incorrect. Incorrect, I'm sorry. Incorrect, and there's no reason for me to lie, I just wanted to stop, we have the right to.
I'm not saying you are, I was just.
I know, I'm sorry, I'll try and be calm. So I can see it from my house, I'm up on a cliff here.
I, I, I know exactly where you are.
Yes, and I can see what's happening, and I see the trucks pull in, I'm not sure the process. Believe he's taken in some trees from land, they call him, he picks them up. Then what happens is they drop off the truck, pound, 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 that's when my house shakes, and the house around it shakes. There's a problem on the construction of our houses, I, I'm sure of, down the road. So then what happens is, after that, now, once that's unloaded, there's weeks that go by of constant grinding, grinding. In here, no grinding is allowed, it's noise, it's just relentless grinding, sawing, grinding. Then after that, a truck comes back in. Now I see sometimes it gets into dark hours, I have videos of all of it, I've sent videos to Mr. Duquette. The town had, I mean, other neighbors have videos, they've sent it to me, I've sent it in. Um, I have videos of all of this even at night, a truck pulls in, and then there's a spotlight at, on top. And more logs are dropped, that he has cut, is dropped into this trailer, and I hear bang, bang, bang. And I don't know what the spotlight is on top, and then it pulls out and leaves, and this is a continual thing. Um. I mean, like I said, we know he has a special permit, but it is not allowed, if you look on this. No fabrication, manufacture, manufacturing, retail, wholesale, sales should take place at the site, but what is he doing with it? He's taking it in and he's selling it back out. All work is performed off-site with two trips daily between the hours of seven and eight. Monday through Saturday, allow him pick up and return of trade vehicles. No grinding the logs, and the applicant is not allowed to bring logs cut elsewhere off-site onto the property or harvesting of any kind.
And, and so it's your, it, it's your belief that other, that logs are being brought onto the property?
I've seen him, I have video.
From other sites.
I have, I have video of that, I've seen it, I've almost got hit with one.
Okay.
You've seen our street, there's kids that walk here, it's dangerous, not only is it dangerous, the noise is terrible. I mean, respect our neighbors. I snowblow and take care of the sidewalk from my house all the way down to Maple Shade School, because I have an elderly gentleman on the other side of me, so the kids can walk to school. We respect our neighbors here. We've mentioned about the noise with him before, and previously other neighbors have, and he's done nothing, I'm sorry. And to show up at my doorstep or to call me and leave me a voicemail, tell me that, you know, I know his attorney, and, great, fine. Another thing is, I mean, it just holds no bearing, we want him to do what he's supposed to do and not what he's not supposed to do, I sold the house on two oh eight Maple Shade. I'm a Realtor, I sold the house in the backyard, but it's the conversation, the con, conservation land going to his house. At a time that we should have had twenty offers on that house, I had one. One, and every buyer that came through, said to me at the time, he was out there. What is that noise, I'm not lying, what is that noise, what, we can't, what is this, what's going on back there, one offer. An investor bought it and is using it as a rental property. This noise affects the value of our properties. I mean, I'm not just sitting here to say that we're upset, we're complaining, it's because it's a problem. It's a problem, the traffic's a problem. The big trucks are a problem, problem, me almost getting hit is a problem, the noise, I mean, I, I feel like my teeth are gonna fall out, sorry, it's that bad. I mean, if it was anybody else that lived up here, hearing this, you would feel the same way, it's, it's just, it's awful, I, I feel like I can't be home and open my windows. So, in my opinion, and you can ask the other neighbors, um. This special permit was violated in many ways, I'm sorry, in many ways.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Uh, next. Mr. Mackey, next person you wanna bring in? So I'd like to repeat, so we wanna keep this, this discussion to the items that Mr. Duquette has cited in his enforcement letter. Hello?
Nina?
You're on.
All right, thanks. Um, I, I just have a couple of things that I might.
So could you identify yourself and where you, and where you live?
Um, I'm Patty Philanthropo, and I live at two oh nine Maple Shade.
Can you sit a little closer to your mic also?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Is that better?
Little bit, thanks.
A little bit, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I don't know how to make it better. So, I have a couple of houses down in Dawn. And I just have a couple of clarifying points, first of all, one of the things is, thank, Mr. Levine, I think you said that. Uh, Mr. O'Brien cut down the trees and brings them onto the property and then cut some mats off and then put truck and brings them off, did I get that right?
That, that is what he said, yep.
And then, I thought I heard that the special condition is that he can't bring logs on site? Am I, what am I missing?
Well, I believe the wording in the special permit, the condition is, and, and this is Mr. Levine's contention. Is that trees cannot be cut at another location, be brought to the property to be harvested.
Be harvested, okay.
So.
That was just a clarifying point.
Yeah.
The other, the other, I guess, concern that I have is that you said there's no, um, record of any complaints with the police department. At all. Is that true, did I hear that right?
That, that is, that was Mr. Levine's contention.
Okay, because I know for a fact that I've called to complain more than once about the noise. And my biggest concern here is that the noise is happening outside of the bylaws. If I understand correctly, the bylaws say, state that he can, uh, do whatever that he's doing back there from seven A M. until eight P M. Monday through Saturday, correct? Nothing on Sunday.
So can we, can we focus on what Mr. Duquette had put in his enforcement letter? So Kevin, can you just please, uh, you know, indicate those again, so we can keep people focused on that?
I don't have any letter.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna have Mr. Duquette read, uh, that again, what, what he cited Mr. O'Brien for.
I'll want a second here.
I saw log storage, is what I have written down. But that's not my complaint.
Okay.
Yeah, number fifteen, condition fifteen, it'll be no retail sales on a property, no grinding of logs, and applicant is not allowed to bring cut logs elsewhere. Onto the property for harvesting of any kind.
So those are what we can act on and what we can discuss in this meeting. Because those are the two items that the zoning enforcement officer has cited him on.
Interesting.
So, so if you have direct knowledge that you're seeing, uh, you know, the logs brought on. You know, it's for something other than harvesting, I mean, that would really, that would be very helpful.
Okay, so I'm not really in a position to be able to sit outside of your driveway and take pictures of what is going on on our property of these things. And he's way in the back, my biggest issue here is he's violating the bylaws by starting work earlier than seven and working on Sunday, that's mine.
Okay.
So who am I to bring this to, if I, if you're saying that there's absolutely no concern or no, um, complaints. At the police station about this.
So the town does now, the town does now have, obviously, a, a town manager, so the town manager might be an appropriate individual. To address those concerns too. And I'm sure she then will bring in the police department to, to, uh, try to observe or hear if there are noise issues, yeah.
But you said, but, but I guess my concern here is I called, there's, there's people that have called about the noise. And yet, I'm hearing that there's no record of any calls about noise. So is my concern more about the police department now? That has no record.
I, I don't have an answer, I, I, I can't answer that, yeah.
All right, all right, so who's the town manager now? I know there's been a, a lot of back and forth.
So there's a woman, her name is Mary McNally.
Yep, okay, that's right, she's staying on for a while, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna contact her, because none of these things that, uh, Mr. Duquette has stated, I have any proof of. So we'll stick with Don, with Don had, and then I guess I'm done.
Thank you.
Uh, do you wanna say something?
Yes, I've just got a question. What about the fact that this is a residential street and got tractor trailers fully loaded and overweight going in and out of this property? Cause I saw one of these trucks the other day pull out, and I'm a retired police officer, I used to do overweight vehicles. And that, that semi was overweight pulling out. So this is okay with the town?
You, you know, quite honestly, I'd be perfectly blunt with you, it's way over my pay grade to know that, you know, whether something is overloaded or not. I mean, if you were involved in that, is that a police issue? I mean, I, I would ask you that question.
The police, the state, which should be a concern of the town as well, because overweight trucks damage the road. The police, the state, which is a concern of the town as well, because overweight trucks damage the road.
Yeah, they do.
And also damage any culverts that they drive over, any sewers that are underneath your street, the whole nine yards. You know, I mean, I'm sitting here listening, you're reading, and you're saying that we can only focus on just this one thing that the gentleman said was in the letter. So we're gonna ignore everything else that he's saying correctly?
So I did not say that and you should not interpret that in any way, shape or manner. What you should interpret is the zoning enforcement officer who is Mr. Duquette, is also the billing inspector, cited Mr. O'Brien for two specific conditions. And therefore, what's in front of this board is whether he did indeed or did not violate those two specific conditions. And if this board believes he did, then we could take appropriate action. If, if a complaint, if a complaint is made on other conditions within that special permit to Mr. Duquette and he therefore cites them in the, cites them in the future, then we would be right back here doing the exact same thing on those specific conditions.
Okay. And my next question is, is why did the log get brought on to his property? Why, I mean, any other tree service, they just, they either leave the log on site for the homeowner to take care of or they cut them up and take them away. You know, I don't know of anyone that takes them into a residential neighborhood.
So back in 2009, he received a special permit from the then existing planning board.
Okay.
He got a special permit with conditions to, to allow him to do so. So that was 13 years ago.
Okay, but I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to figure out is why is there any need to bring these tree trunks to his property with the tractor trailer and then have another tractor trailer come back later and take them to another unspecified location? I mean, why can't the truck just pick them up from where he cut it and take it where it needs to go?
Well, I, yeah. Okay. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Next.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Hello.
My name's Dominic Pellegrino. I live directly next to Tom. I just wanted to come on and just note that I have not had a single noise issue living next to him for the six years here. Tom has been an excellent neighbor and I don't have a single complaint to, to report at this. I know this is not what's being cited and discussed, so I, I will stop there.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Great, hi, this is Mark Oldenburg. I live at 170 Maple Shade Avenue, directly next, uh, next door to Tom. And, um, you know, as, as far as noise is concerned, I have no complaints for the noise. I work primarily at home. And I come and go several times during the day and the week and never had any issues with Tom or his business. As far as speaking to retail, harvesting, cutting logs on property, I have really no knowledge of that or anything to add. I have no issues with Tom. He's been a great neighbor and a great asset toward town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Yep. Takes a, takes a second to get him in.
Yep. Doing a great job, Mr. Mackey. So we have someone, Ray Kay.
Yes, speaking.
Well, I can't see you.
Okay, well, I don't know how to correct that.
Alright, lower left, you see a camera icon. You're gonna click on that, say start video. So hover your cursor down over the left-hand bottom corner.
Yeah.
You see a little carrot, little up arrow?
Yep, I got it. Give me a minute.
Yep.
Isn't technology wonderful? Well, it's not letting me do it.
Alright, so can you at least let us know who you are? Let us know.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, my name is, my name is Ray Callaher. I live at 263 Elm Street. East Log Meadow, uh, the back of my property, butts the conservation land, Graziano's and a, and basically in my house. My house is about 400 yards or so from, um, I think the area that people are making a contention about. I'm retired. I'm home every day. I'm in my yard all the time. I just wanted to add that I never hear any noise at all coming from the wooded area.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next speaker, please. So we have someone on the screen says, Michael, we can't see you nor can we hear you.
Alright, you're unmuted.
Hi. We can hear you and see you now.
Hi, beautiful. I live at 212 Maple Shade Avenue, East Long Meadow, Mass. Five, six hours to play from Mr. O'Brien. I never hear any noise and just speaking of the two issues here, I don't see any violations. I think Mr. O'Brien is a great guy and I want to keep it short and sweet and I have nothing bad to say about him and he's a great guy.
Okay, thank you. So Terry, oh, there you go, okay. Hello.
Hello, hi. My name is Terry Leone and I am located, my residence is at 205 Maple Shade, also overlooking the property. Mr. O'Brien, certainly I don't think we're here disputing whether he's a nice person. I'm sure him and his family are great. Uh, and I had that hope too when I came to the session in 2009 for the special permit and I actually protested against it because of the continual violations that were already taking place from 2001 or two until 2009. Resulting in us having no ability to enjoy our own home, property, yards, cookouts, time with friends outside in the summer, even inside, the noise is grating and never ends. But to focus on the complaint that was noted, the violation that was noted about logs. If everyone would care to Google Earth, 160 Maple Street, you can see the number of trucks. And if you scroll under the tree cover, you'll see thousands of logs that have been processed on the property. Not, not cutting down trees that are part of the property and then selling them at a, at a little stand out front, which is what I was led to believe that the 2009 special permit was. Someone who wanted to leave the site, go to work on a tree service or a wood service, helping people cut down their trees, that's great. And come home at night and maybe have a couple employees that park their car. That's what we all understood, or at least that's what I understood the special permit to mean. What instead it has developed into for the last 13 years with constant, constant travel back and forth of large, large trucks. I have video, I have pictures. I'm not that nosy. I don't sit out there. I got a couple good, long videos that'll show you what we're dealing with here. I've also called the police a number of times, which I will research why they did not for, send over the record of calls. That's absolutely unacceptable to me. Um, we're talking about 5:30 a.m. on a Sunday morning. Our whole house shook to where we wondered if there was, a tree had fallen in our own yard. Everyone in my family woke up. My other neighbors called me and asked if things were okay. This was just a couple months ago. This is, this has gone on for 13 years with tractor trailers most, most recently in the last six months. Before that are these eight-wheel vehicles with tall metal sides with, with logs stacked up over the height and they are turning in and out of the intersection of Elm Street. They're driving by the school. A lot of the logs that are dropped in our, a lot of the complaints that we're, we're sharing with you are happening away from the other neighbors that are speaking on here. It's further down Maple Shade Ave. Mr. O'Brien has a large swath of property that comes down and the, the noise is happening right in front of my house. I can see it, I can hear it and I see logs stored there on a regular basis. And they are being processed like grinding, cutting, all the things that are violation. So storage and grinding of logs, bringing logs on and off and on are all violating.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next speaker.
Beth Welch.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, um, my name is Beth Welch and many of you are my neighbors, so I'm not here to refute statements. I'm only here to say from my perspective, um, and what I hear. I've lived on Breezy Knoll for the last three years. Um, I directly look down, I'm on the hill and I can see Maple Shade right at the bottom. Um, I'm outside all the time. I have a pool in my backyard. I've worked at home a lot for the past year and a half, working on my back porch. And I honestly say I don't hear anything. Um, I don't have any noise complaint in my backyard.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're gonna do Mr. Randall, M. Bednarz and Rose, and then I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring it back to the board.
Okay.
Hello.
Hello. Hi, we're, um, excuse me, Gina Tina Randall. We live at 197 Elm Street. We are property, obviously, butts Tom O'Brien's and we've lived here for 24 years and we've known Tom at least 20 years. And, um, and we don't have any issues. We don't, we don't hear anything. We're, we don't see anything that goes on. We just see trucks that go back and forth, but for the most part, we have no issues. Never had with him. Um, we are in our backyard 90% of the time when we can and on any given day and we don't hear anything or see anything. He's.
So are you on the property right next to the church?
Yes, the second house after the church, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
M. Bednarz, Bednas.
Hello.
Hi, uh, I'm Mike Bednas, live at 144 Maple Shade. So there's one house in between Tom's house and mine. I'm right next to the church there. Trying to keep it about the complaint that was filed. So I have seen trucks go to and from Tom's property. However, I have not heard any kind of noise that would indicate the processing of those logs or and, nor, nor have I seen any of that. So the only thing that I've ever seen was the, the trucks going into or out of the property. And as a, you know, pretty close neighbor, I can see his house from my backyard. I also have not heard anything that would warrant a complaint, so that, that's really all I have to keep it about the topic specifically, but he's, he's been a great neighbor and I have no complaints.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Rose. So we can't hear you, Rose. We can't hear you. Sorry. Okay, so I'm gonna bring it back to the board, so we certainly have heard a dramatic differences in, in comments from butters, from neighbors, from others. Uh, I'd like to bring it back to the board. Board have specific questions. I know that Mr. Punderson and Mr. Kingston were, were on that planning board that approved that special permit back in 2009. I don't know if you want to add anything. But certainly if you have questions or comments.
Well, if I might, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm not surprised that different properties might hear different things given the geography of the area. It's, it's rather complex. Um, I know, have to, full disclosure, I know Mr. O'Brien personally. And I would hope that he would be striving to abide by the special permit and address the neighbors' concerns. Again, we're hearing different things from different people. I'm not sure how, quite how to interpret it all at this point.
Okay. Mr. Punderson?
I, I have to disclose also, I've known Tom almost his entire life, since he was a kid. Great person, great guy. What disturbs me is, is that since the day of the special permit where specifically stated that no logs were to be brought from any other property, and I don't care about the word harvest because it has an interpretation to it. We base it on physically moving logs from outside of property to the property has been going on the entire time. That's disturbing.
Mr. Chair Swallow or Mr. Torsha?
Yeah, I think it would be important also to point out, I've known Tom and his family, or my family's known his family for a significant period of time. Uh, and I know my grandfather and father and uncles have done business with him in the past. I mean, I've, at least I'm not a neighbor, but walking by, I really haven't observed anything out of the ordinary. But it was very interesting to see the difference of concern. It, it seemed like that the concern came from those houses that are operating on a higher level. So perhaps that is affecting their opinion or view on, you know, kind of what's going on. But I, I'd want to look at some more information about this. There was a lot. But I, I'd wanna look at some more information about this. There was a lot, kind of that was just, kind of came out tonight. So a lot of, a lot of different attendees.
I, it's been a long time since special permit was issued. I would like, before we do and take any action on this. For the director to provide the board with copies of the minutes of the meetings at which that. Special permit was discussed and issued. Because I think that will enlighten us a bit and remind me. About what the issues were back then and what the decisions actually were. I do not have those minutes myself anymore.
They were, they were issued to, which George, I read them today.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't see them. Sorry.
Yeah, they, they were there today.
Then I have not had a chance to review them. Sorry.
But it's available for you. So just, it's, you have to scroll down quite a bit to two thousand nine to the right meeting, but it's there.
So I, I guess for full disclosure, I'm not making fun of anybody. I, I don't know Mr. O'Brien. I don't know his business. I know I've only lived in town for nineteen years. I live off of Maple Shade. I walk that specific stretch of Maple Shade from Elm to Porter at least six times a week. At all different hours since the pandemic started. And to me personally, I have not once seen a vehicle go in or come out. Now, it doesn't mean it doesn't happen. But that's my observation over that last two plus years. But I thought John's point was very valid in that it does. A number of the people who lived higher up. Had really concerned specifically, I believe in Mrs. Miss Courier. About the noise and how it came up like that, which was very fascinating. I too would like to know more about the granting of the special permit. I would like to know whether there was discussion from that planning board though about, and I don't know if they were filmed at that time. Do you recall if they were filmed?
Two thousand and nine. Russ, I will look and see, but I think I probably, if somebody have the date, you have the date of that meeting? I can look it up.
I believe it was April thirteenth, two thousand and nine.
All right. Because I will check and get to Nina.
Yeah, cuz I, I would like to know whether the board, that planning board at that time discussed what harvesting meant. So we could specifically address Mr. Levine's point. And whether that board discussed any parameters around besides the hours of operation. But any parameters about how, how many trees could come and go over the period of time. Which would be interesting to know as well. Because I would like to, I would like to be able to address the concerns of the people, the concerns that people had about. How much is, how much activity is taking place and, and the, the definition of harvesting. So. So I guess I'm not. Ready right now to make a decision one way or the other. So. I don't know how anyone else feels about that. But it's certainly, Mr. Levine and Mr. O'Brien, it certainly you've heard. Very, very loud and clear that there are people who own property that a butt yours or. A butt and a butter that have some major, major concerns about the operations that are there. And obviously those people deserve the right of quiet enjoyment of their property just as much as you do. So, but, so I guess Bailey, we would ask and Mr. Mackey, if you could help as well. To see if that meeting of April of two thousand and nine was indeed recorded. At least possibly get the snippet of that meeting out to us. So Don, you're shaking your head.
No, I just, I looked up and we started doing planning board meetings in two thousand and ten.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, um. So would there be audio tapes of that meeting at that time?
There should have been, whether they're reserved, uh, it's hard to say, whether it can sound, it's hard to say. Because I think at that time, uh, they were recycled after the, the minutes were printed up. But I have found the minutes now I see in the filing in, in something that was sent out earlier. I overlooked them. I, I need time to review them before making a decision.
What's the board's pleasure?
I, I make a motion to continue this. Until we have a chance to review it. And. Get additional comments perhaps from Mr. O'Brien or his attorney.
And I guess I'd also like the, our, our planning staff to, to go to the police department and see. What complaints have been made to the police department. Get us copies of the complaints. Dates, times, what was in them, whether there was any, you know, follow up, et cetera. So at least we can have that additional information. And I, and I know it didn't go, the noise may not specifically go to the question of trees. Coming onto the property and then being harvested, but the truck traffic is noise as well. And if it's that many, if the trucks are bringing them on to be harvested, harvested, that, that does create an issue as far as I'm concerned. So. So is there a motion to continue this to the May seventeenth meeting? So is there a second?
I don't know which was first, George or I, but if I was first, George has the second.
So just before we, we vote on this, any discussion on that item? So we are looking for an audio tape of that meeting. Any written materials that might have been submitted? Mr. Levine, quickly.
I have two quick questions. Specifically, we have noticed of the violation created in Mr. Ducette's letter. The noise was not an issue. The noise, I don't know specifically, it's within the jurisdiction of the planning board. The other note is, Mr. Ducette, in his letter, underlines the last phrase of special condition fifteen. Can I ask if that was the only cited violation?
Kevin?
Yeah, well, if, once we figure out number fifteen, the rest of those conditions are gonna fall into place. I did cite number twenty-two, which says any changes to the plans approved under the special permit. Shall required applicant to file for an amendment to this special permit. Or to acquire the planning board and write in whether the change is substantial enough to require a new filing. Any errors in the plan should be considered changes and the above procedure shall be followed.
That, that's not what I was asking. You, you underlined under number fifteen, the last phrase only. Was there a reason that underlined?
Well, that was the main concern of the logs being.
Okay.
Brought to the property.
Okay.
Okay, so we, so we are looking for the audio of it. Any written materials that were submitted as part of the application? We do want you to follow up with the police department. Because there were a number of people indicated that they had filed complaints. I would like to see what the complaint references. Specifically to noise, cuz if it's a lot of truck traffic and quote harvesting, it would be interesting to know what that is. So we need, we need some more homework before we can make a decision. So we have a motion to continue to May seventeenth. It's been seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Punderson? Aye. Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Torsha?
Aye.
Mr. Chair Swallow?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. Okay, we will reconvene on this matter on May seventeenth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, uh, item number two. Of. Sorry. Under new business recommendation of street acceptance for Jeffrey Lane Extension Subdivision. Applicant Southern Any Real Estate Development, Inc., forty-five Knollwood Drive, East Long Meadow, MA.
So I, I wanna preface this. So I'm under the impression, having sat on the charter commission, as did Mr. Kingston and Mr. Levine, who is here as well. That previously town meeting approved public ways. And under the new form of government, it would be town council. And so when this came, so after we released, approved the release of the bond at our last meeting. I felt that it was then gonna go to town council for their action on approval of a public way. Bailey, our new planning director, has reached out to me and I'd like him to address. That issue first. Bailey?
Yeah, so, um, you're correct in assuming or, uh, in your. Assessment of the town council being the approving body. The only concern I have is that it, it is. There has been done in the past by the planning board. It has been recommended for street approval before going through the actual approval. At town council. So that is what the vote would be on is just a recommendation to town council for approval.
Okay. Any questions for Bailey? Hearing none.
Because town council is gonna turn around and say, what does the planning board think? So.
Okay, so do you move to recommend?
I'll make a motion to recommend.
Do I have a second?
My question would be, have all the conditions been met for approval? To your knowledge?
We released the bond, so.
Yeah, so. DPW signed off on it.
Okay, I just want that to be stated. I second that then.
Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Torsha?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Chair Swallow?
Aye.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. That item passes. Next, next business?
Yes, uh, we're going under, uh, other, uh, business here. Discussion pertaining to out of town subdivisions with only access roads to East Long Meadow.
Bailey?
Yeah, so am I able to share my screen? I just wanna pull up a map here.
Give me one second.
So this is just gonna be a general discussion of. The, of subdivisions that are outside of. East Long Meadow. But have only access through East Long Meadow streets. So this is an example off of Porter Road. Where this entire subdivision. Only has one at entrance and that entrance is. Off of Porter Road and E, and East Long Meadow and the entire subdivision is in Springfield. So. There have been some concerns brought up that. That we don't get the tax revenue and. Those, you know, city services that go in and out, like for example, trash service or. Snow plows, things of that nature have to use East Long Meadow streets and there's a lot of wear and tear. On our streets and we don't get the tax revenue to make up for that wear and tear. So. We. Were asked by the town manager to bring this to the planning board to see what your thoughts, concerns. And ideas are about. How to address this or. Um, any of the, you know, any of the concerns you may have about it as well.
So I, I'm looking to Pete and to George, who've been on the planning board longer than others. Have you run into this before?
I never have.
Neither have I. That, that, that particular subdivision is ancient. I'm not sure.
Yeah, yeah, that one is.
There's two of them actually that you can see.
But there's, there's also. Two at least being potentially proposed in the future that I know of. So that's why we're bringing it up as well. So.
I, I would be, if it was allowed before, it has to be allowed again. That's just my general rule I operate on.
Well, I, I would suggest that. We would need to have some kind of an agreement with the city of Springfield. To make sure that they have access to, uh, uh, fire, police, whatever is necessary. Whether it's mutual assistance or there's some kind of financial agreement with the city, I think that's all negotiable. Again, this subdivision has been, I moved to town in seventy-nine. It was there long before I moved here. So I have no idea under what conditions it was approved. Or how, or when, or why. But I would think anything new that goes in, just as we did with the solar field that was going through. Through summers, that there would have to be a formal agreement somehow between the two municipalities. As to cost sharing and access. Because if I was in a subdivision like that, I'm not sure I'd wanna wait for fire truck from Springfield to get there. If East Long Meadow was a lot easier to get, get the truck there, right? So I think it's, you know, that was done, who knows when, under what. Assumptions, but I think going forward, maybe we ought to ask Mr. Mitchell to look into best practices along those lines. And make some recommendations to us.
I moved to town in nineteen fifty-one and as far as I know, that stuff was there then. But I agree with George, times change and it's been allowed before. I don't say you could disallow it cuz you've had. That use going on your town for that many years, but I agree with George that you certainly have to be assured that there's, you know, safety concerns. The safety concerns are addressed, you know, especially finer engine. I mean, it's gotta come from Springfield through East Long Meadow. I mean, that's, I agree with George. That's a, that's a problem. So some sort of agreement should be written up.
Yeah, what's, and I don't know if this is apples to apples, but at the end of gates. There's a, you go to the very end of gates and then there's about a twelve foot parcel of land. And then a new street starts in Springfield and it's kind of interesting. They never cut through. And I think same with you, John and Tom. Yeah, you know, it hits the end and then just stops and there's, you know, you can just look over to Springfield and wave.
Yeah, I think, I think originally they decided to do that because they didn't wanna create a cut through. So kind of to make it, kind of make it quieter. I mean. Yeah, so I, I mean, I, I personally, you know, I, I think as long as there's some type of agreement in place with, whether it's Springfield or Hampden or Long Meadow or wherever these are. I think as long as like, when I, when I first saw this on our agenda, I thought exactly of the solar arrays. Property that we had discussed a while back. So I think that as long as that, you know, thing is in place. I think it's fine because it's obviously worked, you know, without probably much issue for many, many years now.
Another thing that was kind of brought up was the like standards of streets and lot sizes and things of that nature. Being different between the two municipalities. And if you have a street that starts, for example, the one that I showed you was, I know it's old, but. It had part of the entrance was in East Long Meadow and then, so part of the street would have been in East Long Meadow. Do we also have to go through our subdivision process and. You know, street acceptance and that. Everything. Uh, and then also what, what's, what's gonna happen if our street requirements are, or the width of our street is, is less than. Hampden or Springfield and the street sizes have to be different as well.
Well, that's, that's certainly dealt with, with waivers and, and other requirements.
But it would be nice if you developed a checklist of those items, Bailey. So we can discuss those maybe at our next full meeting. I mean, that, that makes sense. Lot size, street width, curbing versus burr, all of those, street lighting issues. Yeah. And, and quite honestly, I mean. And and quite honestly, I mean, if, let's just say, the surrounding or the abutting community is, if the only way they can have that subdivision in that community is to go through East Long Meadow, do, you know, can we also require that town to maintain that street, plow that street, you know, so forth and so on, but. If if only, if there are no houses in East Long Meadow on that street.
I I would actually suggest that Mitchell, check with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, because this is a an issue that has showed up before. I know Chickapie Ludlow had an issue. I think Springfield Chickapie Chickapie had an issue. I'm sure it's common throughout the state. And I'm sure that TBPC has looked into or can look into how it's done, best practices statewide, and give us some advice there. That that's what they do do best.
Yeah.
With with regards to the difference in the streets, just looking at something up, Forest Hills Road for years, which is off Allen Street, if you went down, because I delivered oil down there a lot, when you went down and the East Long Meadow line ended, and the Springfield part started, the street was awful. It was narrower, and it was awful for years. Just to let you know, there was definitely a different standard, because the street, and there's a lot of homes down there that have been there for years, and the streets were definitely different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Bailey also sent around a memorandum today about the the Verizon cell tower question, so do you want to discuss those, Bailey?
Yeah, so I'll just kind of refer to the the memo that I sent out. The biggest thing that I wanted to touch on tonight was just the the four items that I kind of outlined, so. And then, I mean, it would be nice to, I don't want to go through the whole thing tonight, obviously, on the meeting, so if you could email me any of your answers to any of the questions at the end as well, so I can pass them on to the consultant, and he can make some adjustments to the report as well, so. But the last page of the report has a number of items, it's a checklist of open items. Number three was, has the applicant addressed the wetlands question to the board's satisfaction? Nina sent me some information on on that, and they did go to the Conservation Commission in twenty twenty-one, and they received a negative for determination, so they're not subjects to the Wetlands Protection Act. And they don't need any approval there. So that's good. Number eleven was, does the board want to see documentation of maintenance and monitoring plans for the site? As that was something that was discussed before, my recommendation would be to ask for those those plans, and then, you know, before it permit approval would be ideal, so. And then fifteen was, does the board want an RFE, safety compliance analysis? And a peer review of it. And that was something that David from Isotrop actually said to me that it isn't something that should be confidential information or proprietary proprietary information. Verizon doesn't typically hold that information either, so the fact that they did here is kind of concerning to him. So I would just say that someone needs to see it, whether it's him under an NDA or us in a public meeting. It needs to be seen by someone at at the town, so to make sure that there are no safety concerns.
So request, so request that from Verizon, and see what their answer is going to be.
Okay. And so number seventeen is, does the tower as an accessory use exclusion preclude the use from or of this site? And so that is a bylaw question, and it's kind of specific to the the language in the bylaw. It says, in no case shall a ground mounted facility be built as an accessory use or use or, sorry, or use be allowed on a portion of the lot between the primary structure and the street. So there's kind of two parts to that clause, and it's confusion, it's confusing on the interpretation of it, whether it's saying that a cell tower cannot be used as a, as an accessory use. And or or if it is allowed as an accessory use, it just can't be between the street and the primary use or the primary structure.
That was my interpretation as well.
Yeah, and so there's some, I would, I would say that that might be something that the board wants to look into as a potential bylaw change as well, or just clarification with some legal counsel there, so I can look into that, but that was just one thing that, or those were the four things that I wanted to bring up. And then my general comments were in in there as well on the, mostly on the alternative sites, so.
Okay. Thank you. So Pete, go ahead.
Bailey? The the structure is not between the road and the main structure, it's behind it.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
That's okay.
Yeah, so it's not, it was, it was that question, or the way the consultant read it was that it wasn't allowed as an accessory structure, period, so.
That's, that's a ground mounted solar array, I think, not a tower.
I think it was, it's under the section of communication, or I can't remember the exact name, but it's it's communications towers, so it is talking about a communications tower, just not. Yeah, it's, it's, the clause is confusing, so there's two different ways you can interpret it, and that's the one, you're right, the one where it says it doesn't need to be in the front, or it can't be in the front, it would be fine if it was interpreted that way, so.
It's in the rear. I wasn't aware of that. Now, what was, was that in effect when the other towers were put up? We should know that.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I think, don't we only have one other one in town?
We have one tower in town, we have antennas on various other places in town, including the church and the water tower.
Okay, tower's industrial drive.
Yeah.
It's it's Benton Drive.
Benton Drive, I mean, yeah, Benton Drive, thanks, George.
All right, what else you got, Bailey?
Um, the only other thing is the EV charging stations. I've had a chance to look at that a little bit, but I want a little bit more time. Hopefully, I can get something to you next month, but we'll see. Might have to be in June, but on that one.
Okay. So we are not scheduled to meet the first Tuesday in May. So our next meeting would be May seventeenth, and the reason we were not scheduled to meet was there was, that was a primary election day for the town. I think I let you know last time that, and in the end, there will not be a primary. But we had kind of scheduled things for that for that third Tuesday in May, so we'll, we'll just stick with that. And what do we have upcoming? So we'll have the Verizon, we should have Verizon, we should have the Verizon report by the first week of May. Number one, we will, we have them scheduled for the seventeenth. We will have Mr. O'Brien's session again. Do we have any additional special permits that have already been submitted? For May seventeen?
We have one site plan review coming up for the installation of a turf field and some ground mounted lighting at one twenty-six Industrial, it's Roots Learning. So a site plan review for that.
And I guess I I would ask, just on behalf of the board, for those people who failed to show this evening, a call or an email indicating that we are not going to act on their items unless they actually appear, so. I'll do. Okay. Good.
And Mr. Sheriff, I might just comment on two things. I I've sent Mr. Mitchell a concern that showed up at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission meeting about batteries, specifically large scale batteries for in association with solar fields or other intermittent clean energy. We really don't have any zoning for that, and there are issues that other towns are running into on that, and I'd ask him to kind of look into that. And also, there's a presentation that was made by a group from UMass, the Donahue Center, regarding housing and how zoning relates to segregation and some discussions at the state level that are going on, that I think we ought to be aware of. And I asked him to distribute that so that it would be coming from the office and not from me, but just to let you know where that came from, if you do get it.
Great, thank you. Any other business? Hearing none, do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Second. Okay, everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Everyone have a great night.
Okay.